Okay.
Excellent. So we had a brief introduction to the topic by the city manager and then we've now heard from the public. So now it seems to me that we have, you know, the purpose of tonight's discussion is really, do we want to proceed with improvements on 11th Street? And if so, we need to refine our numbers in order an engineer's report. And so then we have to offer direction to staff on what would be included in the engineer's report if we do in fact want to move forward. Yeah, I think that's, that's really where we're at tonight. And yeah, Counselor Lo.
Before, uh, uh, we're going to be asked, are we able to ask the city managers follow up questions based on the count on the citizens testimony?
Sure.
Could that come first before something else?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. And then I, I am prepared to make a motion after we talked to them.
Great. And yeah, well, um, I'm not gonna, I want this to get to the motion so we can address the motion at the hand. So at most, we're gonna, one, each counselor can ask one question at most before we get a motion on table.
May I go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay, so my, my question is, and I've actually thought about this, we've had a number of citizens saying, why don't we just close the road? Just terminate it there and that might take care of a lot of the through, the through traffic. Why don't we do that?
Um, there's some. Yeah, so there's a number of reasons, I guess. I mean, one of the things that you're looking for and good planning for a neighborhood or for a city is the connectivity piece. Ideally, you want to have as many different ways to get to and through a location as possible because that then spreads out that traffic pattern over a larger area. So, you know, if you if you close down the streets at the north of the 11th Street, then all of that traffic is going to funnel down 11th Street as opposed to going west out Quell Glen, and then all of the traffic on Quell Glen that would otherwise, you know, some of which would otherwise go south if they were going, you know, east of town, it's all going to funnel west up to 9th Street and I'll funnel down there. So anytime you're shutting the street back down, you're going to limit the the access of the areas the vehicles can go, and they're going to direct more traffic to specific streets. So what we are typically looking for with development is that it's going to expand those access opportunities and spread that traffic out over a larger number of streets, not a fewer number of streets.
Thank you. And Mr. Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, we touched on a little bit at the last meeting, but it came up again in the staff report conversation about a reimbursement district. I would like some actual meat on that bone. I, I don't understand who, who a new developer would pay their reimbursement to since we're theoretically with an LID assessing individual property owners to pay for the entirety of the project. Are we assuming then that the city would be paying for that instead of the homeowner or the property owners on that street and that the reimbursement would then go to the city? Or just some more detail on that because we've talked about it a couple of times, but no explanation yet. Thanks.
Yeah, you have a quick explanation, Counselor Lehman, on that, Mayor, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So the, the way I brought it up this evening in the staff report was really in combination with this sidewalk local improvement district where the city would pay for the street improvements with city funds. The reimbursement would be set up with the city being the beneficiary. So any future connection to that street, there'd be a reimbursement fee paid to the city by that future developer. And so we wouldn't be just, you know, disseminating that back out to other members of the LID. It would be limited to the city because the city would be the one doing the remain that, that street project with the LID limited to just the sidewalk. I, I don't see an example where you could do a LID for the entire street improvement and then do a reimbursement district on top of that, which is what you're, you're kind of pointing to. I don't see where that would work, either legally or even just, you know, the nuts and bolts of that would, would be very, very difficult to pull together. So that would not be our recommendation.
I, I'm concerned that the reimbursement district also wouldn't work under your scenario because the current property owners on that street would not have paid for this, the infrastructure. And then if a new development were to occur, you're asking them to pay for the infrastructure to reimburse the city where the other properties hadn't reimbursed the city for the same benefits. So I'm a little, I'm a little dubious about the conversation around the reimbursement district. Maybe we can get the city, city attorney to weigh in on that also. I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll just, just answer a quick before Jim jumps in there. You're, you're exactly right. Again, it's not necessarily a preferred option, but it would be an option to do. One of the concerns that was raised in the work session was about future development and about future developers not having to pay for any of this. There was concern about the area of the LID being limited to just those that are being specially assessed that are being given special benefit, meaning they're adjacent and not encompassing a larger area. And so if you wanted to try to capture a large area, I think there's specific concerns about a property directly west or a property directly north of the Quell Glen subdivision. If you wanted to try to capture future revenue from those in some way or another to pay for improvements on North 11th Street, the reimbursement district would be a way to do that. But you're right, it would exclude the, the most recent development there on North 11th Street, namely the, the city property, the Dow property, the Knutson property, it would, you know, they're going to be treated the same as all of the other property owners on 11th Street within the formation of the local improvement district. If that was the route that they, that the city wanted to take. Jim, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, one way to look at it is that your current residents have been paying property taxes over some period of time and that at some point they did in fact, when development of their properties came in, they paid impact fees or into SDCs or other kinds of things to have a street and in, that met whatever standards it met and stormwater in terms of an open ditch or whatever that was. So now you're using city funds that have come from a variety of places. If that makes it more attractive for more development in that area, that's great. The city can be reimbursed and then it can use those same street reserves, other monies that it's recovered for other areas. So you'd kind of be creating a revolving fund.
And as a follow up, that would mean that the, the current developers would not pay into that at all?
No, it would be looking forward, not looking back.
Right. Okay, thank you. Counselor Bisco?
Um, so I just wanted to make the recommendation that Heather Glenn has conditions of approval that require it to develop its streets to three quarter street levels and therefore I remain unclear on why we continue to include them in an LID conversation because in fact they are already required to fulfill that obligation. And if we should move forward with an engineer's report, I think we should first establish their conditions of approval and have them complete that process. It doesn't seem like Heather Glenn should be part of any LID conversation. Um, I also want to point out that there is approximately $530,000 worth of sewer line and water line improvements that are expected to be done at the cost of the city before we improve this street, which means this project isn't $880,000. It's 1.1 some odd million dollars of which a fair chunk of it is coming from city tax dollars. And I think we're not considering that part of it, those improvements of those sewer and water lines. It appears that we're serving this community already. So that is a presumed development benefit improvement. And just as a side note, if we were to establish an LID, that would prevent us from incorporating any pending developments into paying their portion of this street development cost. Just based on the fact that we don't have anything in the works right now that would preclude that, which means if we form an LID, the two parties that are considering development right now that would impact North 11th Street would have a free check basically to develop without having to support the development of the street. To Counselor Lo's comment, I think it's worthy of investigating what that might look like if we were to consider closing off the street. It is a relatively short street. Um, I know some of the conversations about North 12th Street were to make a through way that way to Quail Glen. Um, so perhaps that's worth getting some more information on. And the Counselor Causey's suggestion of reimbursement district, while we may not be able to do that under the current definitions or how we operate reimbursement districts, I think it's worthy to look into some sort of mechanism that would allow us to recover funds from future development that would impact North 11th Street, whether it was a through street or not.
Thank you, Counselor Bisco. Appreciate those comments. Counselor Andrade?
Um, to that point, I have ideas as to how to potentially cut, like prevent that from happening where, um, the developers, if they have to defer their, um, the improvements because there's going to be, like in this case, the water and sewer replacement, then they just pay upfront the city. So then those funds are there. And then, uh, you know, return whatever money is left over if it ends up costing less than what they paid and such. I don't know if that's possible and would like to ask that of Counsel Brewer.
Jimmer Chris, is that a legal mechanism? Is there an opportunity there?
Yeah, you can do a a fee in lieu of improvements, you can have, uh, you want to be a little bit cautious to figure out how inflation works with that. That's it, it's easy to refund money. It's a little, little worse if you come up short on the, on the time of improvement. You can have people bond things. You can, there, there are a variety of different ways to have people not physically make an improvement that doesn't go anywhere perhaps, uh, but where, where it's just not at the right time, uh, but still be committed to participating and to paying.
So then to that point, um, for developer or for their, um, when, um, housing subdivisions are being built on already improved streets, you know, future, happening in the future and, you know, they don't have to pay that and, and we're losing out on that money that others, property, other developers have to pay. Can we charge them still for what it would cost if they were to actually improve the street to like help make that equal or?
So, so a, a way to think of it is that if we've, if we've required another developer to, to put in public improvements, uh, they can always ask to have a reimbursement district put in if they know, you know, yeah, I'm just the first of several subdivisions, the next one's going to come. I'd like to be reimbursed. That's, that's exactly what that mechanism is for, whether, whether it's a, a private development or the city doing that work.
On an already improved street though?
If it's an already improved street, uh, once the improvement is in, I think you've got three months or something to ask for the reimbursement, reimbursement district. Uh, to some extent, I'd say system development charges do some of that, uh, that there's a reimbursement fee to pay back. You know, so it, it kind of depends on the level of the improvements that you're looking at and the facility that you're looking at. If it's a local street, you kind of expect each developer to do to and through their, their stuff and along their frontage at the, at the time uh, that they are developing their property.
Yeah, I was just thinking because like if we require some properties to pay SDCs and the street improvements because they happen to be doing the city a favor in a way by, you know, extending into undeveloped land, then shouldn't we have that of, you know, people developing already developed property or streets and such?
And so if, if a private developer builds a part of a system that uh, is the oversized, they get reimbursed from the SDC funds. Or they, they apply for that anyway. And it's, it's to the extent that the city has those funds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and also Chris, if he can change, switch his audio from where the council chambers are back to the original audio where we could hear him better.
Chris, you can hear, Chris, are you able to speak clearly?
Can you hear me?
You're in a bubble.
Okay. I will grab you on a microphone.
And, and actually, um, Counselor Bisco had brought up a couple of questions. She didn't really ask it as a question, but I think it's probably worth asking as a question. I just want, and I don't want to put any words in your mouth, Counselor. So please just correct me if I don't ask the right question. But Chris, um, or Jim, it seemed to me that, uh, can you is it possible to proceed with some sort of improvement and have Heather Glenn not be included as the LID since it is, uh, it does have conditions of approval for the development?
Yes.
So we could just simply exclude it from any LID and have them
so, so part of what you do when you initiate a local improvement district is to identify where, where that district is and, and, and what's included within it. Uh, it, it may be that in this case, part of the issue is just that logically, you've got something in the middle of everything that you would include within a, a local improvement district. And so, so that's, that's just kind of a a practical factual thing. It when you have the overall project cost, you may have some of that, that you would say, yep, that is, that is Heather Glenn's responsibility and whether they build it uh, themselves or whether, uh, they pay a fee in lieu of, that's a, that, that's a conversation that we can have with them.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Causey?
Yes, I have, um, I have actually two questions, one for the city attorney and one for the city manager. And the city attorney asked, answered half the question, but I was going to ask if, um, Mr. Brewer is prepared to advise us on the appropriate treatment of the Knutsons and the Dowd properties?
Well, they're, they are situated differently to some extent. So the Knutson properties have, uh, a, a non-remonstrance agreement, uh, for a, a special assessment of local improvement district. Uh, it sounds like the Dowd property, uh, did not have that. Instead, they have a condition of approval. It's a land use condition. Uh, what I would say is on the, the, the Dowd properties, uh, uh, that's, uh, an agreement that they will, they will do those half street improvements. Uh, that doesn't have anything to do with a special assessment, uh, in terms of the Knutson properties, uh, you know, uh, that's, uh, an agreement not to remonstrate against a local improvement district assessment.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and my question for the city manager with respect to the water and sewer upsizing. What is the reason for doing that at this time, other than the fact that the street is theoretically going to be torn up? Is there a need to upsize those lines at this time? And why wouldn't you wait for a future developer to cover the cost of that?
Uh, there's not a need at this time due to, um, size or capacity per se. Uh, the reason we would be doing it now is strictly because we would be repaving that street. Uh, we typically put a five-year moratorium on cutting into a new street once it's formed. And we try to adhere to that ourselves. So we would hate to get a new street paved in there and then have a sewer line in that area that's 20 years old or 30 years old or even 10 years old that goes bad on us. We have to dig up the, the new pavement to get down to it and fix. So um, replacing the water line, replacing the sewer line is pretty standard before we pave over a street. You know, to, to go on to kind of add to that, I would say any increase that we would do, we would look at the opportunity to do some type of a reimbursement district so that if future capacity were to tap into that at a future time, we may be able to push on that additional capacity that wasn't needed at the current time that would be used for future. Uh, we see if we can get some of that reimbursed at that time. So again, we haven't really had those discussions yet, but that would be an option that the city could consider, uh, for those water and sewer lines.
Thank you. Um, and everyone, Counselor Nielsen, do you have a question before we go back to second? Anyone else?
I do have just, can I just ask one question?
Yeah, please do.
Um, I'm a little fuzzy as far as the sidewalk requirements. What is the policy on the building of sidewalks? Who funds those and, and how, how is the decision whether a sidewalk is necessary, um, decided?
So there's a, I could pull up real quick that there's, within the municipal code, uh, the city's municipal code states that adjacent property owners are responsible for installation and maintenance of sidewalks. And so typically when a new lot is formed, that gets added as a condition of the site plan, um, when a new house goes on, typically still don't see the sidewalk go in until, um, sometimes after the house is done, just so you're not driving over top of it with your equipment as you're building the house. Uh, but before occupancy is given, that sidewalk is required to be installed. Um, we've made exceptions to that if it's, uh, really rainy and nasty out and you got a homeowner that wants to get in and get their home, we've sometimes given them another month or two before we'll issue final occupancy and we'll give a temporary occupancy, um, but that is a requirement. Uh, what sometimes happens is you have a subdivision come in and all the lots will sell, but maybe one or two lots for whatever reason they're not built. And so as the other homes all go in, the rest of the sidewalks get built and you end up with gaps within a neighborhood where there is no sidewalk um, for, you know, a certain section wherever they may be. Um, and so the city's practice in the past has been, as identified in the code, is to notify those property owners. Um, have the city council determine whether or not the sidewalk needs to go in. And if it is required to go in, we give that homeowner three years to install the sidewalk, um, at, at their expense and, and they can do it. Um, and if they don't do it within the three years, then the city would do that and we would send them the invoice or place a lien on their property. Um, most recently, there was a long stretch, if you recall, up on Nebek Hill, that was the backside of a property. Um, where the front of the property was, I'm not sure the exact street, the first street, there as you come around the corner, I forget the name. Uh, but that was the frontage and then the back of the property was a very deep lots where the back of the property was actually on Nebek Hill on the hill as you go up into it. And that was brought to the city's attention that the sidewalks had never been installed there. And, um, with discussions at the public works committee level, um, eventually I think it was the homeowners association there agreed to go ahead and install those sidewalks, um, on that section. So the city council didn't take a formal stance there and essentially notifying that property owner. Uh, but once that was discussed and they recognized that was a responsibility, they've moved forward to make plans to get those sidewalks installed. So that, that is the, that's what's in the code. It's what's required. And that is the practice that the city council has taken for the last several years.
Thank you. And one, um, one thing I just wanted to bring up because it was mentioned earlier was the 12, the person who lives on 12th Street. I don't have the name handy.
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams. The, the fact that you have the, the two sides of your lot that need sidewalks seems very similar to the corner lots where you have two sides of your lot. And, um, just something I wanted to bring up, uh, as we also consider moving forward, but, um, yeah, no, no question. I just wanted to bring that up. Uh, Counselor Bisco?
So I just want to point out something that has been talked about both at the public works committee and at city council here numerous times, which is this idea of subsidizing development. And when we take a look at the long range of developments that have impacted North 11th Street, we can go back to Quail Glen that was supposed to, um, as a matter of conditions of approval is how I understand it to develop North 11th Street and that didn't happen because it wasn't enforced before the development of the houses. My understanding is that, um, that development had financial challenges, which is why that did not happen, although it's back in the records a ways and it would have to be checked. But I've heard certainly anecdotally from about five people now that that was the anticipated time of development for North 11th Street and it would have been on the, on the responsibility or the onus of the development of Quail Glen to do that. And it did not happen. So that has left North 11th Street unimproved and now falling on the taxpayers. The proposal that we have before us, there have been actually, um, 44 different proposed options since this conversation started. Not one of them excludes Heather Glenn, which means in effect we are diluting the responsibility financially of Heather Glenn's, um, conditions of approval. It's a three quarter street improvement that's required as a matter of that land use decision through the planning commission. And in effect, that's another version of subsidizing development because we're looking at about 1.1 plus million dollars of city taxpayer dollars. And then what North 11th Street taxpayers will contribute, that again is another example of subsidizing development and that's a pretty steep development, um, cost that now is falling on the taxpayer dollars one way or another. Uh, as we look forward, this, none of these proposals have included properties that are part of North 11th Street will certainly, given the opportunity appear to be in the works of being developed. There's enough room on those properties that would utilize North 11th Street to account for 55 to 60 homes. And you saw that in the information I provided at the last council meeting. Um, that's easy enough to go back and recover and verify as well, just based on square footage of properties and maximum develop, or not even maximum, but just development potential. So there are two, if we were to move forward with the North 11th Street. LID at this time, under any of the ways that they've been proposed, we are in fact sanctioning subsidizing development at the cost of local taxpayer dollars and local property owners on North 11th Street. Uh, with that in mind, sidewalks, just to Counselor Nielsen's point, we can request sidewalks to be developed by property owners. That's not unprecedented. I would however like to note that the public works committee evaluated some extensive sidewalks areas that are not improved. And if we're going to require that of one community area in Philomath, I'd like to see that required across the board for sidewalk improvements. And again, that allows that three year process um, from the time that the council decides that to move forward with completion. At this time, I'd actually like to make a motion that we do not proceed with the local improvement district on any of the numbers that have been proposed. And that we go back and we, if we are going to consider a local improvement district, that we remove Heather Glenn, require them to perform their conditions of approval and we look at including local improvement district assessments that would include undeveloped potential developable properties on North 11th Street.
So if I was going to restate your motion succinctly, or do you want to go ahead and try, attempt to do that? Or do you want me to try it for you?
I'm sure I can handle that. Thank you. Um, so I would move that we do not pursue a local improvement district based on any of the 44 assessments provided and that we Counsel Brewer, are you?
That's a, that's a good place to stop or, or you've, you've added an alternative in your motion and that'll just add to confusion.
Okay, so how would you then add the recommendation to not include Heather Glenn in any LID?
Well, if you're not going to have an LID, then you don't need that.
Okay.
So that would seem like if, if this motion doesn't pass and there is some other motion to, to have an LID, then that would, that could either be an alternate that you offer, or it could be an amendment to some other motion.
Okay, thank you. Then that will suffice.
So we have a motion to not, to not move forward with a project to, in the form So we have a motion to not and to not move forward with a project to in the formation of LID. And that was made by Council Bisco and I saw a second by Council Andrade. Any further discussion? And. Council.
Yeah, I I had a question about where the um. The street funds are coming from. That staff referred to in option E. Um. I'd like to know where that money came from, if it's replenishable, if it's a one time. One off thing, or if it's something that's sustainable. Um, to apply to other areas of the city as well.
Chris.
Yeah, so the street funds list there, that's our, that's within the street fund. So those are reserves that carry over from one year to the next. Um, this is part of the. Um, monthly street fee that is collected. Uh, a good portion of that. That money is used for maintenance and ongoing maintenance. Uh, but some of it does get forwarded into the capital, future capital projects. Um, we do. And if you look at the, I don't know, in front of, in the capital. Improvement Plan, I believe the number is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we transfer into the land building equipment fund each year. From that street um fund revenue or the street fee revenue. Into future projects. So it does grow by about a hundred fifty thousand dollars each year. Um, and we can use it for. Yeah, any future street project. So using it on this project would mean we wouldn't have it for a future. City project. And vice versa, not using all this project means we have it for future projects, right?
Great. And then I. Uh. It seems. It seems to me that we have this motion on table, but it seems a little. Uh, early because we haven't actually discussed whether or not we want to move forward with this project. Um, and so for me. I would like to make a motion to table this motion until we have a vote on whether or not to proceed with the project. So I'll make a motion. And is that second of a counselor though? Okay. And so that was a motion to table. Um. Counselor Andrade.
Um, I have comments on both things. This in particular, I think you can't talk about one without the other. That they're intrinsically linked, uh, because. If we are to proceed with an. LID, then we need to make sure that we don't. Hold on. If we decide that we want to go through, then anyway, I just think we need to do them both and I'm, am I allowed to talk about the first?
Let's just focus on the one and then we'll vote on it and then you can talk about the other. And Council Bisco.
So Mayor, as I recall at the beginning of this discussion, you did state that you wanted a motion put out there early in this conversation. Um, secondarily, I don't know if you can. Initiate a second motion when the first one hasn't been voted on.
Yeah, in the Roberts Rules of Order, tabling a motion. Is something that you can make after a motion has been tabled or as an after motion has been made and it's a motion of privilege. But. I appreciate the the question.
And so I'm curious then why you are tabling the motion when you asked for a motion at the beginning of this discussion.
I just think it's not the appropriate motion at this time. I think first we just need to make a decision of whether or not we want to proceed with the project. So, um. And then Counselor Andrade, you have another comment?
Well, what I was trying to say was if we just, if. I, my vote will be based off of. What method we would pay if the council wants to go through. So I. I mean, I would be down for, you know, improving the street, but I don't want to use an LID. So I, like I said, I think they're intrinsically linked and think that um. We should talk about them at the same time.
Appreciate that. Yeah, they are intrinsically linked, but one, one decision. Um, is necessary before the other. Uh, Chris, you have a comment?
Yeah, just to add to the conversation, you know, we we heard, I think even this evening. And I think we've heard throughout concerns about even moving forward with the project. You know, we've heard everything from shutting the road down, making it a dead end road. And we've heard several neighbors say they don't want improvements on Eleventh Street, especially if they have to pay for them. Uh, we hear testimony that they wouldn't want improvements if they'd have to pay for them, that they don't want improvements. So I. I do think that's an important first question for the city council. Is where you've got a neighborhood. Where at least some of the residents don't want the street to be improved. Is that then? Um, a consideration for the council to not do any improvements on that street, or is there enough public benefit to? All of the residents of Floma to do these improvements or the residents of that neighborhood that maybe we haven't heard from this evening? So I I do think that's an important first question to Mayor Jones's point. I do think it would be good to address. The motion on the table or the the previous motion on table by by uh Counselor Bisco. Uh, but I would agree with the mayor that it seems like first it'd be good for the council to decide. Whether or not to even move forward with with improvements or not.
Yeah, so thank you. And then Council.
Yeah, I I think that's the crux of the matter. Uh, the discussions we've had for. All these number of months, uh, even though these these issues are intrinsically linked, they're also separate. Uh, there's a separate thing i- is being expressed right now. Do we want the road improvement done? Does does the council want to follow through on the commitment to the CIP? Plan as as it's been envisioned? Or do we not? And I think it's time for the council to be on record, one way or the other, whichever way the vote falls. Um. And anyway.
Yeah, and I'll just add that. It's very possible that we could vote that everybody would like to see the road be improved. But that we have seven different. Preferred approaches and that we just can't come to agreement on one. So that's entirely possible. Um, but do we want to see it improved? I think that's just simplifies the question, right? Um, Counselor Bisco.
So in speaking to my motion, I think it's important that we have, we spent money on an engineer's report that. Provided us some perspective, but certainly not adequate perspective. I think before we could even determine whether or not we want to move forward. Wouldn't we want to know what it would look like? If Heather Glenn does the improvements that are required by its conditions of approval and we include the assessments of the other properties. So we know actually what we're voting on. Rather than a ambiguous idea of improving the street with no idea what those costs will be.
Hmm. It's a great question. Chris, um, does that get at the crux of what an engineer, we'd be asking for engineers report essentially, which would get us to that, right? You're muted.
Yes, exactly. So in the genetum summary, that's the second. Motion I put in there was if the council determines that we're going to go forward with. Improvements to North Eleven Street. Then the next question to consider for the council would be. Do we want staff to go back and work with the engineer to update the engineer's report? And if that is the case, then then yes, it would be very helpful for the council to give some additional direction on what. Changes to the original engineer's report that was done back in June. The council would like to see. So omitting uh the Heather Glenn subdivision, I I think is a great recommendation. We should look at, see how that changes. The figures and changes the numbers. Um, you know, there's any number of things that have been brought up either by the. Neighbors or by the council members in the last couple of meetings. Uh, I think it would be helpful to see, again, I I'm not an engineer. I don't try to pretend to be one. I've tried to take in what the engineer first gave us in June. I've pre, you know, I've. Thrown them into the spreadsheet and I've done my best to give various options throughout the last several months. Um, I, you know, I'd be a little careful here, but I. I see that as a benefit to the city. I know it's been thrown that there's confusion and that there's this. We have all of this overwhelming information, but the fact of it is, I've tried to provide you with enough information so that you can make a decision and. And yes, some of those assessments that were put out there as options. Aren't viable options. We know that now, but had we not looked at them, we wouldn't have known. So. Uh, not to ever put me in the same class as Edison, but uh, there's a whole lot of light bulbs we know don't work now because we've had an opportunity to look at them. And I think that that, again, if the council wants to move forward with improvements. I think there's a lot of ways that we know we don't want to do it now, which is hopefully helping the council get to ways that we would like to do it. If we were to proceed, but I I do think the first question remains to be answered, which is. You know, are the safety concerns and the development and the future development on North Eleven Street? Sufficient to warrant improvements on Eleventh Street? And I'd, again, I'd add in that the city. On top of uh the Heather Glenn subdivision, I think the city as well, we would, we're responsible for three quarter road improvement along the the park frontage. And so. You know, as part of that consideration, I don't want to get too far ahead. I would think that property could also come off of the LID, right? But the city property wouldn't be there. Um, why have the rest of the neighbors help pay for that frontage improvement that the city is responsible for? Um, so so that could be pulled out equally, um, just as a, as for instance. So. Again, I think there's a number of things to take into consideration when we're looking at different types of assessments. Um, but I I do think that the mayor's question is an important one on on where to go. So.
Thank you. Counselor Andrade.
To Counselor Cosi's earlier point about um asking about why. Now and why, why now for upgrading the water and sewer lines? Um, and knowing that there's a five year moratorium on digging. Newly paved streets. I logically thinking, it seems to make sense that we shouldn't upgrade. At the moment or uh improve the street at the this moment. Um. And I would be curious to hear other council members' thoughts on that.
Are we going to vote on the motion to table or what?
Um, yeah, first of all, I just wanted to let.
Councilo, you had a comment on it?
No, uh, I I can get back to that. Let's get on with the voting if we can.
Okay. And so we have a motion on table to table. Uh, Council Bisco's motion. I'm all in favor of tabling the most, uh, Council Bisco's motion. Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Uh, so motion care, the motion to table carries a six to one. Um, so with that, Councilo, if we look at a motion.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, uh, okay, good. So. Basically, um, I moved the city council affirm its desire to follow through on the Eleventh Street water, sewer, storm, drain and road improvements. For the start, for the entire Eleven Street as documented in the capital improvement plan. Provided an acceptable funding plan is subsequently agreed to.
Okay. Sounds relatively straightforward. Uh, so we have a motion on the table to proceed. As long as we can come up with an agreeable financial solution. Paid for, correct?
Hmm, yeah.
Um, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. May I speak to the motion?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so um, I, you know. I I really appreciate all of the work that's gone into this effort uh since May or June of last year. Uh, in a lot of ways for me, we put the cart before the horse because the council never did vote. To proceed using the uh, the procedures as outlined in Philomath Municipal Code fourteen point one oh. So we've kind of been going down a road without. Doing a lot of talking, but we haven't really uh come to any. We haven't really voted to to approve anything and we haven't come back to the council. With any sort of recommended, recommended action. Uh, and having said that, there have been some very valuable uh points that have been brought out through the Public Works Committee discussions, I think, and council. Uh, uh, I'm very uh. Interested in the conversation about uh undeveloped properties and underdevelopment, if undeveloped, if you. Once you get to the funding thing about assessments. Uh, also what special benefit means to what properties? Those, those would be things that I would look at in a subsequent motion if we're talking about any sort of special benefit to assessments. And I could see a subsequent motion being made that then would deal with some aspect of the funding. Uh, but I, to me, it's clear from the, from what the residents have said, uh, even though we haven't had an official public hearing that we will have. Uh, if. We do then decide to continue on with the process. Uh. But based on what I have heard, I think all of us have heard, there's, there's definitely a lot of uh reluctance uh and just. Opposition to what would happen, I think. Uh, some of that is based on maybe misunderstanding or confusion or just not in totally adequate information. But uh. And it's very difficult to find a a fair and equitable way. I hear that a lot and I really agree with that, but. One person's fair and equitable is another person's uh. Uh, burden. And and so it's very hard to decide who's. Going to benefit from that. Anyway. Uh, but our conversations always seem to intertwine. Uh, do we want to do the road or not? Or are we gonna, and then we get into the funding on the other side. So it's this accordion conversation that goes back and forth. So I, it, so my objective here is uh that we provide direction to the city manager, one way or the other, go forward or we don't go forward. And uh. Do we want the street improved or not at this time?
Thank you. Um, Counselor Bisco.
So I don't know that I'm necessarily opposed to improving the street, um, but I do know that there is a large opinion out here that's not data driven and that's about the. Speculation of the use of North Eleven Street and the safety concerns and how many people are using it. And we really don't have any data to provide that information as a basis of fact. Um, just more opinion. I do want to point out that North Ninth Street has had far more public concerns raised to the council. Previous to any LID conversation and it is one of our top priority streets. Um, I would like to make an amendment to Counselor Lowe's. Uh, motion, however, that. Where we want embedded on the backside that we are assured that we will evaluate. How future improved. Future developments might pay their fair portion of a street. Um, knowing full well that if we take action and establish an LID again, that any development that comes the very next day will not.
Can you just make a clear amendment? And then you can speak to that.
So my amendment is that we include. Methodologies that will allow for development in the benefit areas of a local improvement district. To account for future development.
Okay, thank you. If, and do we have a second for that proposed amendment? So we have a, an a motion to amend by Counselor Bisco and second of my counsel Andrade and Counselor Bisco, I welcome you to uh speak to that amendment.
So the point being on North Eleven Street, very specifically, this community is not interested in supporting this. We don't have data. Basis for the safety concerns or the traffic concerns that are being. Um, presented to this council all the way through. And that, in fact, we have two properties that are primed for development that will benefit greatly from the street improvement. When in fact, the large burden of the development of this street should land on a property that can develop twenty-six houses or and or thirteen houses or combined. So I think it would be premature for us to move forward with an LID, not considering those facts. As to how future development, which could literally be tomorrow. After we approve an LID might benefit from. These property owners who are being asked to pay this. It's important also when we look at these assessments to realize that we are asking for properties to pay up to forty-eight percent of their property value. To support an LID. Um, we continue to just not acknowledge those numbers. It does go to the point of the fact that LIDs remain a not sustainable way and a not equitable way to develop our street infrastructure. That benefits the street as a whole. And I'd also like the council to consider that we go back and actually have a more deliberative and broader conversation on alternative funding. Which to date has not been had at the planning commission nor really before this council, very surface level. Um. No meaningful investigation, what that might look like to help offset LIDs.
Thank you. Constable.
Yeah, I'm, I um concur with some of what Counselor Bisco just said, that we don't actually have. Um, the data. I've heard a lot of people say that people are using North Eleven Street as a cutoff. To get to North Ninth Street when if you're on Pioneer. It's literally two blocks straight to Ninth Street. I don't know why you would turn down. Uh, crowded um, street with no sidewalks on it to. Cut off and then stop twice in the Quail again. Quail Glen subdivision. At stop signs before you get out to Ninth Street, which is your ultimate goal. So I'm a little dubious about the amount of traffic that's happening there anyway, but I do want to point out something that the city manager said earlier, which I think is very important to understand when. Uh, addressing the issue of whether we could cut off this street and turn it into a dead end again. Um. Basically, the idea that, oh, if there's an impassable route, it's going to increase traffic on all the other routes. Basically, the idea that, oh, if there's an impassable route, it's going to increase traffic on all the other routes. And I, I think we all need to recognize that that is exactly what's happening to the city of Flemish in general. The major path for egress and ingress into the city is becoming so congested that people are looking for alternatives. And finding them on places like North 11th Street. So I think we have some kind of a, a, a moral obligation to improve that. That road or to fight for some autonomy and how. Um, traffic into and out of our community is handled and we, and we haven't been doing either of those things. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Lehman. And Counselor Lo?
Right, uh, I appreciate, uh, comments both of Counselors Bisco and Lehman, and I. Uh, I agree, I appreciate those, but I. I guess where I'm coming from is, is pretty narrow at this point. This is just 11th Street, uh, through our CIP, we said we will improve it. I think the issues that both councils bring up definitely need more airing. We need to talk about them. Uh, in, in a great way, if we could go back in time and just say, we need a master plan to cover all of these contingencies. Would be wonderful, but, but we don't. We're sort of at that point where we have different. We, we have different infrastructure needs or perceived needs that we follow through on. And I, I think, uh. So the net, so what I'm looking at is a very narrow thing, but this particular street at this particular time, do we move forward? And if we don't move forward, we can still take up all of these other questions about equity and. How, what's the best way or lids it, the best way to do it or no alternate, alternative, uh, funding or no? I know the pilot works committee's put an awful lot of effort into looking at those and I've listened to the conversations and there's a lot of good information there. Uh, things I didn't know about until it was brought up there, but it, but there's still. We don't all know everything about it. I think they're, um. I, I think the assessment district, you know, it's interesting because in that, in the chapter, uh, improvement procedures. You will not find the term local improvement district as it's, as itself. It is not identified. We refer it that way. It's, it, there's, there's improvement, there's special benefit properties. So it's a little misleading, uh, because we talk about all these different assessment methods. But then there's this little paragraph about alternative financing that you can do. And that's been brought to light, which is good. So I think there's a great, there is a need to continue on this discussion and deepen and explore it. As, as both counselors suggest and other counselors have talked about in the past. But for me, I'm just really narrowing down. Does this 11th Street have anything? Is anything going to go on in that 11th Street this year? Do we want to approve that? We're, we're not shutting out any of the other conversations, but. Do we want to go ahead or not? If, and if either way, we can, we can proceed, uh, so that's my argument for that.
Thank you, Counsel Andrade.
Um, thank you for that, Counselor Lo. I. Um. If this were a broader conversation, I'd be more open to the idea, but since we're only talking about this street this year. I don't want it to be a precedent if it ends up being something that we regret. And I think that we owe it to the community members. Who have access to that street, um, and any other unimproved streets when we go to improve them. Uh, we owe it to them to, uh, have a set methodology, uh, that doesn't. Give them. Uh, wild charges different from one another, um, within a street and between streets. And, and yeah, also that idea of the five-year moratorium, if we're going to get some. If we're going to get some more development in the next couple of years, I. It's just going to be more tearing up of streets to, uh. To replace the water and sewer lines if we weren't going to do them and so, yeah.
So we have a motion on table, uh, to move forward with the improvement of our 11th Street. With, uh. With the agreement that we will, only if we, um, uh, come to an agreeable solution for the financing. And Chris, you had a comment?
Yeah, I believe the, the motion on the table is a motion to amend, uh, Counselor Lo's motion.
Oh, yeah.
So the mo, the motion on the table is motion to amend with the, uh, verbiage that Counselor Bisco permitted.
Can you summarize what that motion to amend was? I apologize.
Um, I will give Counselor Bisco the opportunity unless, uh, Ruth Post hasn't.
I'd be happy to restate what I wrote down if that is acceptable to Counselor Bisco. Uh, I have Counselor Bisco move that we include a methodology. That we allow for development that will benefit from improvements to pay their share of the improvements.
Okay.
Was that close?
That's what we said.
That works. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, uh, to, to incorporate. We have motion on table and you heard it. All in favor of including that, amending the motion to include that language, please raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Okay, so motion fails, um, three to four. Uh, with that, we have a motion on the table, um, to proceed with the project. Has nothing to do with funding at all. That can be discussed in a later, in another motion afterwards. All in favor of moving, of moving forward with the project. North 11th Street, please raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. So motion carries four to three. So. Now we at least know that the council is interested in seeing North 11th Street improved. Um, and so now I think it's worth discussing what that would look like. Uh, finance, financially, what would it, yeah, who would be included in any special assessment if we're going to do that, et cetera, et cetera. Counselor Cosi.
Uh, may I hear Mr. Workman's comment first, please?
Oh, I didn't see if he had a comment. Chris?
I was just gonna recommend a quick break, but, uh, we can take a few other comments first. Just, uh, looking at the clock, we're at, uh, eight oh five, Mayor Jones.
Let's just go ahead and take a quick little break, um, since it gets point. So we'll take a, we'll take a four-minute break. We'll be back at eight oh nine. And Chris, do you want to go ahead and take us live again?
It looks like we've stayed live, so, uh, we're, we're ready to go as soon as we hit record. But we'll wait till, uh, other council members come back on here. Are you ready to begin, Mayor Jones?
I am. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much for taking that moment. And I just wanted to, before we, um, before I started calling on folks, I wanted to remind everyone. Including myself, that we actually, the table motion, the motion that I asked to have tabled is still live. And so Counselor Bisco's motion is probably most appropriate to address at this point in time. And I'm going to ask that the city recorder, uh, repeat what that motion was so that we can address that. Um, and then, yeah, then we can move forward.
I have that the motion was to not proceed with the LID on North 11th Street. Is that accurate?
Counselor Bisco, does that sound accurate?
That does sound accurate.
Okay. Did you want to speak to that motion now?
I did. So again, I'll just reiterate the statement that I have already made and has been made before in that we really don't have any data driving this decision to pursue North 11th Street improvement, a local improvement district. Um, it is one of five streets on the priority list to be improved, as identified by. Our street improvement, I'm not sure if it's capital improvement or not. Um, I know I've heard reference to North 11th Street being on the capital improvement project in the past, but this is in fact a new council, not the one that established that. Street on the capital improvement plan. And I want to note also that this street is not identified in the TSP plan from twenty eighteen, I believe it was. So I'm unclear why we are pursuing a street, um. Without gathering more information why we'd love to do that and without gathering information on the alternative funding options for infrastructure. As I mentioned in my other information, we have dozens of other streets that need to be improved as well. Um, and of most importance, I'm concerned about future development that will benefit from costs that come from the taxpayer dollars and property owners on North 11th Street. And that's my reason for making that motion.
Thank you. Counselor Cosi.
Um, yes, I just wanted to, um. Say that I'm opposed to the motion because I believe the. Local improvement district or reimbursement district are the most expedient ways to move forward with this. Um, certainly other approaches can be used, but I believe they do, will take years to develop. Um, and this is the only one that really doesn't require approval at another level. Um, and also, I'm very concerned about the safety issues on North 11th Street as a result of the park and as a result of. Increased pedestrian ta, traffic, which residents have. Um, described to Counsel Bisco in which Mayor Jones himself has noted. According to our world department of transportation sidewalks reduce redu, reduction in crashes by sixty-five to eighty-nine percent. So I think there is an urgent need to get this done. Um, and that's why I support moving forward with it.
Thank you, Counsel Cosi. Counsel Andrade.
Um, thank you for that, Counselor Cosi. I was unaware of that information, uh, regarding sidewalks and safety. I too have safety issues. I am curious if there are ways to. Help ameliorate the situation that are temporary, like. I don't know, having some sort of great covering these areas, something temporary to. You know, allow people to walk on them. I'm, I'm not sure, but if there's any other way that we can increase safety on that street where it's temporary, I think we should do it. And even though it might be expedient, I. We shouldn't do things just because they're fast and they're the fastest way to do it and because that's the way things are done. We have the opportunity to think outside the box and. Come up with something that is more, uh, that is better for the community. So I am for this motion.
Thank you. And Chris?
Yeah, I think, Mayor, so I strongly support the notion of new ideas and especially new council members as they come on bringing new ideas and new ways of looking at things. Um, to me, that's what invigorates me about having new people come onto the council and new committees. I am a little concerned about the mindset that. When we have new council members come on, that that hits a reset button with the city as far as any of the projects that are underway. Um, this project was conceived years ago, was added into the strategic plan by the city council that time. The city staff have taken actions to follow that strategic plan. It's been added into the capital improvement plan. It's been added into the budget. Money for engineering has been approved by the city council and has been spent on this project. And, and, you know, several of these things take place and I can list a number of projects that the city is underway on now. Um, I would hate to think we get, you know, halfway through a water treatment plant and we get a new city council and that project would come to a stop because, you know. Four to five members of the community said they didn't want the project anymore. So I do think it's important to take a good look at why past decisions were made. And to understand that, you know, we, we really can't function as a city. If we're going to stop and reset every time we have new members come onto the city council. It's why we have long-term planning. We have a, you know, a twenty-year horizon with our master plans. We have capital project lists, um, we have, uh, system domain charge methodologies where identify the projects that are priorities that we're going to do in the foreseeable future. We have capital improvement plans that look out three years. Strategic plans that look out five years. And, uh, again, it's not that we're bound to these and that the council can't change direction or pivot direction. Uh, but I, I think that a lot more weight should be given to continuing down the path that prior city councils and decisions the prior councils have made. Um, especially in this situation where we've spent resources and time and energy getting to as far as we have. So I would. I'd hate to see that go to waste. At the same time, if there's, uh, additional questions about the importance of improvements in North 11th Street. Um, those could be addressed as well. Uh, but there is value in past decisions that have been made by those who are sitting in those chairs. Um, not more than, uh, you know, a little over a year ago.
Thank you. And Counsel Lo?
Well, yeah, just speaking of motion, I, I really don't know if, if, at any of these, uh. Improvement options that we see, if I could support any of them, I just don't know. So, but at the same time, I'm not sure at this stage in our discussions, I'd want to close the door on that possibility. So I'm. I, I might down the road, but at this point, I, I, I want to keep that as a possibility. And I also just want to offer the observation that. In this, if we, you know, we're adhering to the chapter fourteen point, whatever it is. If we're adhering to that at any point, if we feel that, that we don't want to continue with the effort, we can abandon it. It's stated throughout that. That procedure that the council can proceed or not proceed. And so if we get to a point where nothing seems viable or we're just. Better, you know, there's just too many other issues, we can stop it. So. And, and that's what I think this whole, that's phase. you know, there's just too many other issues, we can stop it. So, and, and that's what I think this whole, that phase of the discussion is, is, you know, is there good funding there or not? Is equitable? Is it fair? It doesn't, it can't be uniformly fair, but at least is it tolerable to the folks that it's, that are having to pay more than those that don't? I don't know. But I still like to have those discussions.
Thank you, Counsel Lo. Counsel Nielsen?
This is just such a very heavy topic that we all take very seriously and I appreciate the comments that have been made. I think there are some new insights that I am starting to consider. For instance, when we mentioned, was mentioned, I think it was Counsel Bisco that mentioned excluding Heather Glenn, my LID. And then Chris was it that mentioned the city park as well. It would be nice to know, I feel there's inadequate information just to say no LID at all, but rather maybe to look a little deeper into those considerations. And then also, the three-quarter street improvements, the Heather Glenn and the city park, what do those, how do those affect this eleven, North 11th Street improvement? I just think there's some information that's lacking that we might benefit for, from in making valid and equitable decisions. So I also would like, I don't want to close the door on an LID as of yet, because I think there are some options still to be considered.
Thank you. And Counsel Lehman?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. This might take a second. So first, I agree wholeheartedly with everything that the city manager just said about past decisions by councils can't be dismissed and whatnot. But I do want to point out that I'm not a hundred percent convinced that if the city council that assigned this to the capital improvement program and recommended the use of an LID to fund it, if they would have had an engineering report like the ones that we have in front of us now, if they would have made that recommendation. So I, while I agree with what the city manager is saying, I also think that there's, there's things that come up that need to be considered when you're, when you're looking at these long-range plans. I think that we all agree, even though we haven't had a vote on it, I think we all agree that using the LID and fully burdening the property owners for the complete cost is too onerous. I'm curious to see what happens if you back Heather Glenn and the city lot out, but I have a feeling that that also is still going to be too onerous for people. I think that if we're using street funds and SDCs and grants, we're in effect using taxpayer dollars to supplement the cost of doing this improvement. So I think we should just cut through all the red tape and just ask the citizens to do a bond for this particular project if we're going to end up funding it mostly through taxpayer dollars. I'd rather do it through the front door than through the back door. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Lehman. Appreciate that perspective. I was just going to add that I also think it's good to continue to explore these options. I think that the idea of including an LID combined with a reimbursement district, it sounds intriguing to try to tap into future development that may occur as brought up by Counsel Bisco. I don't know what that would look like. I don't know that I would support it in the end, but that seems like something that I would like to, to have more information about, at least. But, Chris?
Thank you. So, yeah, I agree. I, what's been stated already, I think it's maybe premature to close the door on an LID. I still think there's some value in looking at it, looking at some different ways of assessing it. As much as it pains me to say that and have, have the count continue to go up from what we're at forty-four, forty-five assessments to continue to look at additional. But you get some additional insights and information I've gathered, having an opportunity to work with the engineer, I think would be helpful to bring that back and have the council have whatever information you feel is necessary for you to make an informed decision. Even once the engineers' report were to come back, again, if there's additional information that's missing or additional changes, you have the option to, once again, update the engineer's report, ask for other specific information to be included in that engineer's report. So, you know, that is part of the process would be to see what that assessment would look like before the city council were to vote to hold a public hearing and invite the community to come and listen to what that assessment is that the city council, at least as a body of governance has decided, looks like it would be fair and equitable and achieve the, the goals of the city moving forward. So I, I do think closing the loop on LID right now would be premature and I'd, I'd welcome the opportunity to work with the engineer to bring some more information back to the council by way of the engineer's report.
Thank you. Counsel Bisco?
So this discussion continues to eliminate, well, my motion was suggested to be abbreviated. The motion was to not pursue this LID as it stands. I think it would be reasonable for us to terminate my justification in making that motion is we've asked this community to bounce back and forth for months now on proposals that range anywhere from five thousand to fifty thousand dollars for the majority of the property owners. There's plenty of conversation happening right now that suggests that we need information more than just an engineer's report. And while I, I welcome that at the right point, I don't think we should prematurely spend more funds there either, which we've already done to a certain extent by not having all the cards at the table. I do really appreciate Counsel Lehman's point in that if we're spending the kind of money that we are spending, that are public dollars, that it's important that, that we're, you know, upfront about that. And so exploring some of those options further would be helpful. And before we move on with any engineering proposals or recommendations, I'd like to see some staff summaries come back of what changes we're going to make to an LID idea first. But my motion still is that I think we should terminate this LID as has been proposed. Do a full deliberation of the conversations that this council is bringing forward to make sure we cover all of our bases. And if we choose then to move forward again, it's just as easy to reinstate a local improvement district conversation rather than leaving this community out there wondering what's going to happen next and which next round of versions are going to come about that remain unclear. So I'd rather the council is giving that guidance on any proposed assessments before we throw more numbers at them and put them into this space of, there's certainly distress being felt by taxpayers and property owners on North 11th Street. I think we can do this in a better way.
Just to clarify, the motion on the table is actually different than what was just stated. It's simply that we not move forward with an LID. But just, just wanted to clarify that.
And that's correct, Mayor. I just wanted to provide some context as to the reason. It wasn't just to terminate the conversation on LIDs generally. It was to allow us to gather more information.
So, and then Counsel Kazi?
May we call the question, please?
Yes. All in favor of moving forward the project without, we've already stated we're moving forward the project, but all in favor of not pursuing an LID, please raise your hand and say aye.
Mayor, do you have to vote on calling the question first?
There was no objections.
Okay, thank you. If you could repeat your question.
All in favor of not using an LID to move forward the project, please raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. So we have the motion fails three to four. So now with that, I think that I entertain a motion on, Counsel Kazi?
Yes, I'd like to move to proceed with the improvements on North 11th Street through special assessment by the benefiting properties and direct staff to work for the city engineer to amend the engineer's report dated July twenty twenty-one to omit the Heather Glenn properties and to use the assessment options from the table provided in option E, which is the sidewalk only option.
So we have a motion on table made by Counsel Kazi. Can I guess, do I have a second?
Could we amend that to not to exclude the city park as well?
If we, if we get a second on it, then we can vote to amend it. So we have a motion made by Counsel Kazi and seconded by Counsel Nielsen. And then Counsel Kazi, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, yes, I would. As I stated previously, I think this is the most expedient way to move forward. And I also believe it's the most equitable way because all of the property owners included in the LID are limited to the cost of their sidewalks, which is based on linear frontage, which is a measurement of the sidewalks. I, I would like to speak to Counsel Nielsen's comment because the city in moving forward with this project would probably be putting in two hundred thousand dollars or more and certainly put in SDCs that could be used elsewhere. I don't see why we should ask the city to put in more money because of the park. It doesn't change. It doesn't change how much the city is contributing, I don't think, because the cost is going to be whatever it is after all the sidewalks have been paid. So I'm, I'm not sure that makes sense to me, but I would certainly entertain that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, would you anticipate if the park, the city of, the city property at the park was removed from the LID, would that impact the costs for the different homeowners?
Yeah, so just looking at the, the table that we're looking at, the city property is identified on here. You're looking at, again, just specifically if we were looking at to the motion at option E, you'd be looking at the frontage. It's about, just, just beyond halfway down there, about fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars is what it'd be looking at for sidewalk only. So if you excluded it from the LID and we're doing a half-street frontage, it would definitely be more than the fifteen thousand, which is just for the sidewalk, right? So the city would be putting in, if you exclude the, the city, if you include the city, the park portion is going to be fifteen thousand. If you excluded the park portion, for the city to do a half-street road improvement, it would obviously be more than the fifteen. So, so, yeah, I think it would mean additional funds going towards the project overall. If it was, if it was not included in the lighting.
Wouldn't that just reduce the street funds the city would pay?
Yes, the, probably, yes. So your, your total street, your, your total cost of the pavement for the project would be reduced by the amount of the money that the city is paying for the street in front of the city park. So, so, yeah, it's going to be six half dozen one way or another. At the end of the day, the city in large part is going to be paying for the street frontage in front of the park, whether it's through an SDC that we've collected that we're going to spend or the street funds we've collected or it be through street funds we've collected that we've already transferred to land build equipment that we've put in the budget for this year. It's the same money that's going towards the project.
All right, thank you. Counsel Bisco?
So I have a question for Counsel Brewer, but then also some comments. So Counsel Brewer, in the case of forming, well, first, do we have to form an LID to request property owners to improve their sidewalks?
No.
Okay, so that can be done without forming an LID. And in this example, if we did form an LID to improve the sidewalks, would that preclude any subsequent LID formation for any other street improvements?
No.
So what you're, just so I understand and everybody else, then we could form another LID to for street improvements as well under this proposal?
So, yes, you can, you can form separate LIDs for separate improvements. So you could have a sidewalk, a special assessment, a street special assessment, stormwater sewer. There's, there's obviously some benefit to combining those projects.
Okay, thank you. So my comments then to that proposal is that, number one, sidewalks only are not going to address all the safety concerns on this street, including wider parking spaces. So children are not playing in amongst cars as readily. It's not going to address curbs and gutters. It will not address open ditches and it will not provide lighting for the street. If we are in fact going under the presumption of the need to improve this street for safety reasons, sidewalks only will not provide that. Also, that methodology has a hundred and two thousand dollar property value, paying eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars for sidewalk. I can't imagine in a lifetime getting that much benefit from a street side, or excuse me, sidewalk improvement. Another example is a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar property would be assessed fourteen thousand dollars for sidewalks. So this is not an idea that will get us to the end of the safety and improvement of street that we're looking at. It's quite burdensome on low-income properties as well. And it leaves us open for another LID at a future time. I do not support this motion at all based on that information.
And Counsel Kazi, you want to speak to that?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that, that I believe the assessments are in some cases being compared to the assessed value of the property rather than market value of the property. The market value of the property is typically at least forty percent higher. So I don't know that that's a fair comparison. And the, the cost of these sidewalks is what would be required of any other resident in the city, just as we asked sidewalks to be put in on any big hill. And the other comment I would make is, as I understand it, the LID results in the sidewalks being put in at the same time as the rest of the project. Whereas if you just required, just ask people to put in the sidewalks, I believe they have three years to do it. Is that correct, Chris? So that would actually increase their cost depending on when they did it, potentially. So, and certainly the intent of my motion, and I believe the wording of the motion was that the entire project would move forward with the LID.
Yeah, and I was hearing a difference between Counsel Kazi and Counsel Bisco's understanding. What I heard, and I could be completely wrong, was Counsel Bisco was thinking that only the sidewalks be moving forward? Whereas Counsel Kazi's motion was that the entire project moving forward. And I, like I said, I could be completely wrong, but that was some confusion that I thought I heard. Counsel Bisco?
Was my, the latter was my intent.
Right. Counsel Bisco, is that accurate that you were thinking something different?
Well, so option E was recommended and option E is a sidewalks-only option. So it's not that it is a full project option in this case. And I will say to Counsel Kazi's point, whether assessed value or market value is being utilized, the only thing we've been provided as a council throughout is assessed value. So it's the materials provided by staff that are being used, used in that any evaluation. Either way, I think it's fair to say that those are hefty assessments on low-income individuals in this community. And that does bear consideration.
And so then, just to clarify, the actual motion is to move forward the entire project, how limiting the cost of improvements to the cost of the sidewalk installation?
The cost to the, to the property owners, correct? And excluding the Heather Glenn property.
Right, thank you.
I would certainly favor excluding the park if the money that the city would pay for the street improvement in front of the park is already budgeted and would not come out of reserves. Is that the case, Mr. Brookman?
No, so it's money in reserves that is budgeted. So it's not money that we've reserved for future years. It's, it's street fund reserves that we'll be using for this project. So.
Okay, so it really does matter.
Right. And, and we could, again, as an option, we could include both, right? We could have the engineer run the numbers with the city property in and with the city property out. We could run the numbers with the Heather Glenn property in and Heather Glenn property out. So again, you've got Uh, we could run the numbers with the, the Heather Glenn property in and Heather Glenn property out. So again, you've got actual numbers to look at and, and make your decisions based on, as opposed to some numbers that I put in. I don't want to minimize my numbers too much, but again, there, there were really, the intent of this chart was really to more see the distinction and what happens to these assessments when the city adds in addition to the STCs, we add an additional hundred or what, two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars toward the project, what the assessments could come down to the equivalent of, right? So I, I want to be careful not to quote these numbers too harshly. I would lean on the engineer's report to do that more accurately.
Thank you.
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Uh, yeah, as long as it's directly relevant.
It is. So option E is estimated a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, give or take, to the property owners. That means that if we were to improve this street with the sewer and water line increases, we're looking at a cost directly to the city taxpayer funds of one point one to one point two million dollars estimated based on these variable numbers. That's considerable for a street that's a thousand feet long. And that, I just want a clarification if that is correct, because that's not in our chart that we're looking at.
If you want to give me a minute, I can look up the CIP and get those estimate numbers, but those are estimates in the, in the capital improvement plan for this year.
Right. Counseler Lo.
Hey, so I'll go back to fourteen ten, uh, the procedures, and the item that, that I'm fixated on here is the, is the term especially benefited properties. And this came out in our work session, too. So I would like to have a word, I, I guess, as the engineer's report would do it. But in order for me to better understand or to, or to consider assessments on property owners, I would like to know uh, which properties are to be named as benefiting properties. So we talked about you know, the vacant land that could be, what, once it's sold and it's purchased, and it could be developed off of Pippa Lane. Is that, is that one of those properties or not? So I, I, I want to know who the, who the, the owners of these properties are. If it's just on Eleventh Street, or it's gonna involve other people. And then the other thing that I think is really important is the undeveloped and the underdeveloped properties. We talked about that and how that would have a, a bearing on, on the, on the mix, who pays what. And I think it's important that we include that because going forward, we're gonna have other discussions about other streets we're gonna improve. So I think the same considerations here, when we say speci- especially, uh, yeah, benefited properties, what, how broad is that? What, what are we talking about? And I think we should define that as part of what we're doing here. So we're we're doing the same approach in anybody with any future project. And then the same thing about the underdeveloped versus and undeveloped. I, I think that we set a precedent, whichever way we go. So I, I don't know if that's an engineer's report kind of thing, but I, I would like to suggest those two items in connection with amending the motion.
So were you proposing to amend the motion, or?
Yes, I just don't know if that's part of the engineer's report. If, if it is, then my amendment would be that the engineer's report to include an identification of which properties are to be named as benefiting properties, and a determination of whether or not the special assessment criteria of benefiting the properties should take into account their undeveloped or underdeveloped potential.
And just for kindness to, to the city recorder.
Yeah.
To state that more succinctly, is it possible to do that?
Uh, it could be with some wordsmithing.
My question is, did you, did you read that, or?
I, I've written it out, so I can send it to you for sure.
You can send it to me, that would be great.
I will do that. I shall do it. I'll do it right now.
So we have a motion to amend, um, the motion. Do we have a second on that, or do we need to, can you repeat the motion for you? The motion to amend, can you repeat the motion to amend?
Yeah, the, the motion amend uh, to include an identification of which properties are to be named as benefiting properties, and a determination of whether or not the special assessment criteria for the benefiting properties should take into account their undeveloped or underdeveloped potential. And I'll send this to Ruth right now.
And do you have, and just out of my curiosity, you said undeveloped and underdeveloped potential. Is that a question, or, or is that a specific definition, or is that just something you came up with?
No, that's from the, our discussions in the work session, and we talked about undeveloped, and Counsel Brewer said, well, you gotta consider underdeveloped, so I'm I think we need to consider those things.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second on Counselor Lo's motion to amend? Okay.
Nope.
Let it drop.
I don't need to send it to Ruth now.
And, um, actually, I had my hand up, it disappeared, I'm not sure.
Actually, can I interrupt? Yes, I do still need it for the record.
Alright, great, get it to you.
Two things I just wanted to bring up were that Counsel Lehman had brought up that essentially, we'd be paying a lot of tax funds and that we, he my interpretation, what he said was that he would rather see it go to, to bond, to vote, to, to the citizens to bond. And that didn't seem entirely accurate, because one, we have the Campo grant funding, and we also have the street STC funds, which technically are not a tax tax, street funds. Chris, can you verify that that is taxed money?
Uh, it's primarily the, the monthly uh, street fee that's collected.
Yeah.
So whether it's a tax or fee, it's money taken from residents.
Right. And so not moving forward the project saves some in the street funds, which is essentially a tax, but I would suggest that the street STC and the Campo grants were not taxes. So just wanted to mention that, that's my perspective. Um, and then the other thing was that when I was a counselor under the previous, um, council, we had sent a conversation based on sidewalks and installation of sidewalks to the Public Works Committee um, to discuss and basically asking whether all cities sidewalks should be improved across the city and that never really got beyond Public Works. I, I think that's entirely a relevant conversation now. But we, we, we haven't had that conversation, but that is something I was, I still am very interested in hearing the council come to some, or share some thoughts on that. Not tonight, but at some future point in time. Counselor Kazi.
Um, I have two questions for, uh, Counsel Brewer. The first is, I did not find a definition of especially benefited, so I wonder if you could reiterate that, at least in our code, if you could reiterate that for me. And my second question is, I think the answer to this is no, but can a property be assessed differently if it is underdeveloped or undeveloped relative to a developed property?
Okay, so, so, so two, two, two very, uh, 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 different kinds of things. So specially benefited, special benefits uh, actually are creatures of state law, and the, the local code incorporates what's really uh, pretty much, uh, what the local improvement district language from state law said in nineteen eighty-one. So one of, uh, there, there probably been changes since then. Uh, but, uh, fortunately, there've been a, a number of court cases, and there's a pretty succinct uh, explanation of what that means from an ODOT case, uh, which is special benefits are those that add anything to the convenience, accessibility, and use of property as distinguished from benefits arising incidentally out of an improvement. So, uh, the assumption that courts generally make is frontage improvements benefit a property. So if, if you, uh, have a curb in a sidewalk, that's a benefit to you. If you have a sewer pipe that runs along your property, whether you connect to it or not, uh, at the time it's put in, the assumption is that's benefiting your property. As opposed to the incidental, where, yeah, I might walk down the sidewalk at some point, I might drive down the street at some point, but uh, it, it's not directly benefiting me. So that's, that's really the distinction there. In terms of a local improvement district, uh, you're gonna have to treat uh, property the same, and it would be a challenge to assess a property that is underdeveloped for that development potential without assessing all properties in, in the same way. And that, again, is why we kind of end up with frontage uh, or area, uh, or perhaps increments of area. Did that answer your two questions?
It did. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Andrade.
A couple things. Uh, I believe underdeveloped and undeveloped are actual definitions. So just wanted to, to counsel those point. The, let's see. Uh, I would like Chris to remind me what SCC funds are for. It's, I know it's for maintenance, right, or expansion of streets.
Yeah, so not maintenance.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant.
So, yeah, so on our, most of our STCs, you've got a uh, reimbursement portion of them, which offsets the, that infrastructure that's already in place, that was oversized and put in, in place, and then you've got a improvement portion as well, which is for a future expansion of the system. Improvement STCs can only be spent on improvements or expansions. Uh, the reimbursement portion is a little more open. It can be, it can be used a little bit more freely, but in either case, it can be used for maintenance.
Okay, cool. And then do we have any restrictions regarding Campo funds of how to use them, when we need to use them by? And if so, can we get that information? If it's like a long list, can you send that to us?
Yeah, so in short, these were funds that came down from the state. They were given to Campo, to our region. Um, they were earmarked as kind of the emergency funds for projects. Campo opted to make these funds open to Campo members or Campo jurisdictions for bike ped improvement type projects. And so there was a short vetting process to, for staff to submit projects of interest that were in the pipeline where the funds could be used readily, so shelf-ready projects, so to speak. And I submitted three different projects, and we were awarded funds for two of those three projects, and this was one of those two. So
Okay.
We, we don't have, we, we do need to report back to Campo because they need to report back to ODOT. Um, but we're not gonna have pages of requirements explaining exactly where, when it got used. We need to identify the funds were used for improvements to North Eleven Street, which added sidewalks, bike bed connectivity, but we don't necessarily have a dollar-for-dollar match. Now, if ODOT's listening to this, it might be disagree with that. But in general, that's all the reporting that I've been told we need to get back to Campo is the project, you know, the, the funds were used for the project.
Okay, that is good to know, because I was, I didn't think that they were already allocated to particular projects. And that, like, we had to decide where to put it. And then, um, to Mayor Jones's point about sidewalk discussions, the Public Works Committee did have that discussion last year, and it was pretty much moot because I'm under the, if I remember correctly, they either were outside, they were like in county lands, we just couldn't we weren't like legally allowed to make them put sidewalks in, or they were on undeveloped streets, so. And they, why put them in if they're going to be developed at some point?
Thank you. And then I had, uh, well, I was gonna make a motion to amend uh, the the motion on hand. One, I was making a motion to amend that we remove the city property from the LID. And I can make a separate motion, but essentially I wanted to explore the, the reimbursement district option um, by incorporating the property in North Eleven Street and and the property that's on Pippa Lane. So there's a motion to amend on the table. If I have a second. Nope. Okay, second by.
Repeat the motion, please.
The motion to amend would be to remove the city property from the LID and to explore reimbursement district options for the project. And I believe we have to identify specific properties within the R, within the reimbursement district, is that correct? Jim?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
If I'm gonna make a motion to include exploring the remo- the reimbursement district option, do I need to specify the properties, or is it just more general?
I don't, I don't think so, uh, because we, uh, we've got a pretty robust process in the reimbursement district uh, section of the code, and I think if we're looking at that, that, that gives us, uh, some parameters.
So the, then the motion essentially would just be to remove the city lot from the suggested local improvement district and explore options for reimbursement district. So I have my, the motion made by myself and a second by Counsel Lo. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Counsel Bisco. Counselor Kazi. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see if Counsel Bisco was talking. If you were, you were muted. No, Counsel Kazi.
Um, may I ask for your motivation to exclude the city property?
It sounds like it sounds like that would lower the cost for the other um, for the property owners within the LID. But maybe that was not a given.
But if their cost is limited to sidewalks?
It would be. Yeah, I guess if, if we're limiting it to the actual calculation for the sidewalk calculation, it wouldn't change anything, right? It would be the same. Right, so. Chris?
Yeah, again, I, I think I, I'd go either way on the motion. I don't really have a recommendation there, but I think either way, uh, the engineer could look at both fairly simply, and then the council could look at both options, and if it benefited the other property owners, then council could make a decision at that point, but I'm telling you, it's really hard for me to give, I, I feel bad, but I, I really can't give good direction on whether that's gonna lower the cost or in- increase the cost, that the engineer's gonna be better suited to take into consideration that portion of the street not be included in the overall construction cost and what that would do with the assessments. So I I, I'd favor not, not, uh, passing that motion and, uh, leaving that as an option that the engineer could, could take into consideration.
I think it's, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Counsel Kazi.
And I believe if a reimbursement district is used, I don't know if that would be in addition to an LID or in place of the LID.
Better or either, I think that would just be what would be explored.
Okay, uh, I guess my question is, if a reimbursement district is used, I believe that the same assessment methodology has to be implied to the current residents as to future development. Is that correct, Counsel Brewer?
No, well, let's, let's, it doesn't really have anything to do with residents, it has to do with development. So, uh, if So, uh, if there, when new development. Or redevelopment. Occurs and attaches to, to the. Infrastructure that you've put in place, that's when the reimbursement is triggered.
Correct. Now, if, if we have only assessed. The residents, their sidewalks. And new development triggers reimbursement. Would we be reimbursed for anything more than sidewalks?
Yes, because that's not, that's not the infrastructure that the, well. Okay, let me, let me say, it depends on what the application is for. So let's assume the city puts substantial money into a street, which. Future development would have a responsibility to pay for because they generate sufficient traffic. That's going to use that street as their primary connection. Then. It wouldn't just be the sidewalk, it would be the street that the city has paid for. Think of it exactly the same way that you would look at the. Uh, infrastructure put in place by any private development, I built this, I don't want the next subdivision. Uh, to be a free rider on my development. I want them to pay their fair share, and that's exactly what, what you would be doing with a reimbursement district. Only with those city dollars.
Okay, to further clarify then, could we move forward? As my motion had proposed, limiting residents' costs to their sidewalks. With the city and the Campo grant and the SDC is paying the balance. And when and if future development. Attaches, then reimbursement could be pursued.
Yes, uh. I think so, what you might not be able to do is get uh, a reimbursement fee that would also attach to the sidewalks. So I, uh. It's just, yes, for the street. Not for the parts that the city didn't pay for, is, is, is what I think.
I think I'm good with that.
And the idea, my idea is that, what if someone comes, comes in and buys, just as council, but I remember Counselor Bisco mentioning, which could be wrong. Was that if someone comes in and buys five lots along Eleventh Street. And develops into triplexes or fourplexes, or develops, you know, twenty-six properties at the top of North Eleventh Street. Uh, would there be an expectation that they contribute to the new street that we just improved? That was my thought on it. Uh, and Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, I'm still confused about the whole reimbursement thing, um, just because the street exists. I mean, you, I don't know how you could. Have a new development pay reimbursement for the street, but not any of the existing development, I just conceptually can't. Wrap my, my head around that, um. So that'll take a little bit more digging on my part, the um, the question really that I had about. The, doing the sidewalks only and then having the city pay for. The remainder of it kind of still holds true, we're basically trying to figure out a way for the city to pay. For the bulk of, of the improvement. And maybe at some point in the future, possibly get some of that back from a future developer. Even though that future developer is gonna be responsible for all the street in front of the development that they're doing. Um, it, it just seems like if we're just to pick on the Knutsons again. You know, they developed a bunch of triplexes on the street, which is essentially the reason why we're having this discussion. To begin with that, and, and the subdivision, the subdivision's on the hook for a three-quarter street improvement. The, the Knutson properties are not, but it sounds like we want to try and make a system. So that the next Knutsons are gonna be on the hook, and I don't think that's reasonable either. Um, so everybody's on the hook or nobody's on the hook, in my opinion, and if we're gonna put nobody on the hook. Then I think we need to get a vote of the citizens because we're all gonna have to pay for it in one form or another. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Lehman, appreciate it. And Counselor Bisco?
So I have, um, thank you for that, Counselor Lehman, again, I, I support looking into that conversation deeper. I have a different question, um. If we're going to use the Campbell grant of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, that is specifically designated for bike and pedestrian. Infrastructure. Then. If we're asking the property owners to pay for sidewalks only. And that's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand some odd dollars under option E, then don't we have to directly? Put that Campo grant towards the sidewalk proportion of this project, thus reducing the private property owners. Responsibility for sidewalks to about forty-seven thousand dollars, meaning aren't we restricted in how we use that Campo grant?
Chris?
Yeah, I would argue that we're not, um, widening the sidewalk in and of itself, or widening the street in and of itself. Adds additional space for bikes, it increases the safety. So you could just as easily put on sidewalks as you could put it on widening the pavement itself. And still justify it, and again, with the amount of reporting we're gonna be required to do. I wouldn't foresee any backlash from Campo if this was used for. Street improvement, street widening, as opposed to actual sidewalks being installed. Uh, their interest is that it's gonna go towards a street improvement project that improves bike ped. Uh, connectivity, which I think this project would do.
And could, thank you, and could you also, um, you mentioned two projects that when, when we solicited these funds that you represented to Campo. What was the second project that we would be removing these funds from?
South Sixteenth Street, which is on the CIP for next year.
Thank you, and Counselor Nielsen.
Not to contradict Counselor Lehman, but I, for me, that reimbursement district makes sense if a future developer is. Benefiting from an investment made by our city, that they have an opportunity or, or the responsibility to reimburse the city. So that those funds could be used for future development, that just makes sense to me. But my question is, what's the likelihood of us being able to? If we decide that reimbursement district is the way we'd like to go, of having that in place. Prior to development being made on that street. Because it would be moot if we had, if it wasn't formed prior to any of those properties. Being developed, so that's what I'd like to know, what would be the likelihood of us having that in place? So that we could actually, the city itself, therefore the taxpayers of the city could benefit from a reimbursement district.
Great. Jim or Chris?
Uh, Jim could speak this slow, yes, but there's a, there's a process in place for establishing a reimbursement district, we went through it kind of beginning of the year. With Boulevard Apartments, there's notification to the neighbors, and affected parties has to be completed, public hearing process, uh. You know, passage of an ordinance, and so it would take a little bit of time, it would be, you know, two to three months, uh, depending on. Public input and, and feedback and how the council went, so. As far as getting a, a reimbursement in place before construction were to take place. Um, that would be kind of close, but definitely before the project was completed and, and we got on to where a. Kind of a final resolution for the, for an LID would be, would be looked at, that could be in place.
I think the question was, have it in place before development? That would be. Subject to the reimbursement, I, I don't think we have any way to know. Yeah, they're gonna have it to complete before a, a property would be required to contribute.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any site plans or pre-application meetings or anything with any of the property owners on. Eleventh Street at this point, so.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with what Counselor Nielsen's saying in, in kind of context, but. Like the Knutsons wouldn't have been able to develop their triplexes if the road didn't exist there already. So I'm having a hard time distinguishing what separates. Development that occurs on the footprint, existing footprint of North Eleventh Street. Versus development that may happen at the northern terminus of. The current Eleventh Street, particularly knowing that the developer, just like the Quail Glen, or not the Quail Glen, the, the other one. The Heather Glen subdivision had, has responsibility for three-quarter street improvement, so if someone were to. To develop that property at the end of the current end of Eleventh Street. They would also have to do a three-quarter street improvement as a condition of their. Of their development, they're gonna have to pay SDC fees, just like, you know, a, any other developer would, so I, I guess. I'm just having a hard time justifying trying to put a reimbursement district on. Future development when we're not willing to put basically the same, what, what in my mind equates to the reimbursement district on. Recently developed properties in the same, in the same street, it, it doesn't seem. Fair or reasonable, and I don't know that, and if I were one of those developers, I'm sure I could find an attorney who would argue it for me. Anyway, I, I just don't think that the reimbursement district can be applied only to. People in the future, if we're gonna do a reimbursement district, then it should apply to everybody that could potentially benefit from the improvement.
And I'll, I'll speak to that just because I completely agree with you. I think that ideally every improvement that every person improves along the street would be paying into. This thing, but I don't, according to what my understanding is, there's no, there's probably no legal way to have. Someone who's already developed on the street contribute. Unless you develop an LID specifically only including those properties, which probably, which may not um, pass muster with the. Law, with, yeah, the courts anyways. But. I would have loved to have this sort of thing in place, you know, us improve the street with a reimbursement district five years ago, then everybody would be contributing now. But that's just my perspective. Uh, Counselor Andrade?
Um, to complicate matters, um, I just wanted to let everyone know and remind some of you who were there. Uh, at the Public Works Committee meeting, and I think it was April. Uh, we looked over reimbursement district language that, in the municipal code. And made suggestions about amending it, but. We, and we wanted to continue that conversation, but then other things came up, so uh. I don't know if it's worth looking into that some more as well, because. Um, I know we were also looking on how to revise it into a more, um, in a, into a safer way. To not, you know, scare our community members or have a repeat of Donna's sermons.
Thank you. Counselor Kazi?
Uh, I would just ask if we could call the question on your amendment and then on my motion.
Absolutely, uh. And Chris, can your comment wait?
Uh, absolutely, it can, well, the question's been called, so yes, it will wait.
Thank you, uh, so, and as well, be mindful of the time, it's almost nine fifteen, and I know we started an hour earlier than normal, so. Anyway, we have a motion. Uh, to vote on the amend, the motion to amend. Uh, to basically explore the reimbursement district option and to remove the city property from the LID. Uh, all in favor of?
Mayor, could you please state the whole motion with the amendment to make sure it's very clear?
We're only voting on the amendment right now.
I under, I understand that, but with context to the full motion, it would be helpful.
Sure, uh, Counsel, I'm sorry, City Recorder, can you kind of provide the context with both? The motion, the original motion?
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you'd like to hear what the, the. Primary motion would look like if it included the amendment, is that correct? Uh, that would sound like to proceed with improvements to North Eleventh Street through specialist assessment. By the benefiting properties and direct staff to work with the city engineer. To amend the engineer's report dated July twenty twenty-one, and to omit the Heather Glen properties. And the city property. Use assessment option E sidewalks only, and explore the use of a reimbursement option for the project.
So we have a motion on table to amend. Counselor Kazi had a question about the motion on table.
I just wanted to um, restate that, um, the motion assumes that the project would move forward. Um, as outlined in the right, right-hand column of. Option E.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to amend, and we're only voting on the motion to amend. Uh, by incorporating the, uh, by removing the city property and by exploring options for reimbursement district. So, all in favor of passing the motion to amend, please raise your hand and say hi.
Hi.
Um, all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. So we have a mo, motion carries six to one, so now, uh, we have a motion on the table. Um, an amended motion on the table. Uh, all in favor of passing the motion as stated by, uh, City Recorder a few moments ago, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four to three. And so at this point in time, uh, we're asking for engineer's report to explore these options. Chris, do you need any more clarity from the city council on how to move forward?
Only if, uh, if there's any members of the council that want any other additional considerations, I know. Sometimes the amendment to the motion captured some of those, but I, I don't think it would be inappropriate if there were. Specific things that the council would like to see in the engineer's report, that would be helpful to know at this time. Outside of what was already approved, which was removing. Uh, the Heather Glen subdivision, removing the city park. And. The consideration of reimbursement district would be kind of outside the scope of the engineer's report, but we can provide that at the staff level. Uh, as the engineer's report comes out, so as far as engineer's report goes, the information I'm providing to the city engineer, I believe I just have those two. Um, obviously in addition to con, um, option E, uh, in its fullness with the. Sidewalk, LID, and the city, um, paying for the balance of the project.
Um, Counselor Lo?
Okay, um, I might be confused, so are we eliminating? Is this solely that restricted now to discussion of the public districts? Or are we expanding out to other financial op, options? So for instance, Counselor Lehman talks about a, a bond. So I think that's something should be in the table, is that something that we would put into the? Into this direction, or is that outside of it?
I. I'm open to take direction, my impression was if we were gonna move forward with looking at the local improvement district, that's where we would focus the conversation. Um, and if the conversation with the LID doesn't move forward, then it may be appropriate to look at addition, you know, other options at that time. Um, but again, we've, we've looked at both. Uh, as we've heard from the Public Works Committee, we've tried to kind of do both at the same time. Looking at LID assessment options and looking at other funding options. I think we've been, you could argue, less successful at being able to do both of those at the same time very well. But again, I'm open to council direction on that.
So can I just clarify, so if the council's consensus is, our focus right now is looking at everything having to do with the local improvement district or. Reimbursement in that district, and with, that's our focus, but if nothing comes together in that, then we could look at the other stuff? The other alternatives? Is that what we're saying?
That was my impression, but again, if, if that's not correct, then that'd be good for me to know, so I can look at what other options you'd like me to look at besides. Working with the engineer on the engineer's report.
Yeah, I just like to know how the other counselors understand.
Sure, yeah. Um, I think that at this time, we have the option of asking Chris to examine other financial. Mechanisms to fund the project. I think that if we're gonna choose to go to bond. That's going to, to delay the project, absolutely, and so that's less time sensitive. So that it seems to make sense to mu, from that perspective, to kind of focus in on exactly what options we want Chris to. Uh, to pursue further. Um, you know, as Counselor Kazi's motion, she wants us to focus on, uh, cost and limit. The price to a homeowner, to the sidewalk only, and so therefore to me. You know, we're clearly not interested in pursuing these higher, higher level assessments, and so we can remove all those from the options. And so hopefully, um, as the public. You know, at the public will, can stop suggesting that we have assessments before a bunch of property owners. You know, that exceed fifty thousand dollars, for instance. So I like, I like the idea that we're focusing in, trying to. Give some sort of a, an idea of what type of assessment might actually cost. Count, any other counselors have any thoughts on that, that you wanted to contribute? Um, I can't tell who's got hands up, really. I see Council Nielsen.
I was just wondering, could we also ask the engineers about the cost at that a hundred dollars per linear foot, if that's still valid? Now in January of twenty twenty two, or if it's gone up and down, or, or how that, if there's any changes to that, I'd be interested in knowing that fact.
That would come out of the engineer's report, right, Chris?
Yeah, it certainly can, I mean. Yeah, we can, we can look at that. There is an engineer's estimate in the original engineer's report. There's a line item for sidewalk, there's a line item for curb and gutter, or for curb. Um, it, it doesn't equal a hundred dollars on the year foot. Um, what we've been looking at is also including some of the engineering costs, the mobility cost, the, the base. That's in there, and that's not specifically line up, like we don't have a line up for base rock under the sidewalk, right? There's just. A general, um, line item for all the base rock that's gonna be. For the width of the project, including the sidewalk, so. Um, we can, we can pull that, the intent of the council is to have. The neighbors will pay for only what it would cost them to have installed the sidewalks themselves. That's gonna be a much different number than if we're assessing the neighbors, the cost that it would. You know, the cost of installing all of the local, all of the sidewalks within a local improvement district. That's probably gonna be a higher number. It means more money from the neighborhood is gonna go towards the overall project. But, you know, I, I can almost guarantee you that there's individuals on the, in the neighborhood that could. Contract with a friend or, or install the sidewalks themselves even and save money and do it for less than a hundred dollars of the near foot, so. Yeah, I guess I would just need direction on what number it is that you want from the engineer. Is it just? What is the actual cost of installing the sidewalk or? Um, you know, what's a fair assessment for a sidewalk? Local improvement district assessment. Those are, I guess those are two different numbers, is what I'm getting after.
Thank you. And I think, and I saw that Counselor Kazi had a hand up, follow up to David Boe. Is that correct, or did you have a separate?
Yes, that was correct, um, because my assumption in using the proposed motion was that. It was addressing a local improvement district, um, which does not. And based on the amendment that we are considering a reimbursement district. Um, I would. Like to make a motion that the council consider. Um, at another meeting. Alternative funding options for broader street improvements.
Thank you. And Counselor Bisco, oh, Counselor Andrade had a question, follow up to Dave, Counselor Lo.
No, I was just second, she, you made a motion, right?
Did make a motion.
So I was seconding.
Got it. So we have, um. I just want to clarify, we only have one motion on table right now, right?
That's correct.
It's getting late.
It is.
So we have a motion on the table by Counselor Kazi. It's like my counsel Andrade, Counselor Kazi. And the major city recorder, did you get that motion clearly?
What I have is for the city council to hold a discussion on broader street funding options at a later meeting.
Okay. Um, do you want to speak to that motion, Counselor Kazi?
No, I don't. I think I'd like to talk about it all at another time.
Got it. Um, so it looks like Counselor Bisco, did you have a follow up to Counselor Kazi's question or motion?
I have a different question, but I'd like to call the question on that motion first.
Um, do I have a challenge to the call of the question? And so, um, so all in favor of voting. Closing the discussion and voting on the motion on hand, please raise your hand and say hi. Opposed, please raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Nay. I didn't actually see anybody voting in favor, but then I saw five and opposed. So I saw it fail two to, or zero to five. Are there any abstentions? I don't know. So I don't have seven votes. Trying to seek some salute, some clarification, how many voted in favor of the calling of the question? Zero. How many vote, how many voted in opposition to calling the question? Please raise your hand and say hi.
Hi.
Okay, so, okay, so motion failed unanimously. Council Lehman, you had a comment on the.
Yes, I'm opposed to this motion because I think that it should go, this discussion should originate in the Public Works. Um, committee rather than the full council.
Thank you, appreciate that.
As originally was done.
I appreciate that. Um, so we have a motion on the table, or no, yeah, sorry, we have motion on table, all in favor. Of.
Mayor Jones, you've got hands up by Counselor Andrade and Counselor Bisco still.
Are these still, well, these are relevant, so Counselor Bisco? Can you just raise your hand for now, so we know when, when it's actually appropriate?
Well, it was before the motion, so I just want to make sure I get that chance to have that conversation.
I understand, can you just lower your hand for now?
Um, I feel, yeah, we had that conversation at Public Works and we brought back. Uh, generalized information, and I think the next step. Is to have more in-depth conversations about. Um, well, so we brought back summarized information, I should say, because we did have more in-depth conversations there. Uh, that we have yet to have with the city council, and I think this is the next step.
Thank you. Yeah, and I personally think, yeah, I'd still like to, the, uh, Public Works Committee to. To assess this out a little bit, um, before the council needs to have that conversation. Um, I feel like the coun, too many things are coming before the council, and I think that this is appropriate committee work. Um, so anyway, all in favor of passing the motion as suggested by Counselor Kazi, please raise your hand and say hi. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Don't think it carried, uh, motion fails, uh, two to five, I believe. Is that wrong? I think it was two to five. Uh, Counselor Bisco, you had your hand up previously.
In light of that last motion, I will also state that we have spent some time working with Council Brewer and staff on this very discussion. Um, I too would rather see it come before the council for a broader discussion. Rather than compartmentalizing or siloing this discussion, there are. Uh, dozens of other streets that we will need to address for local improvement. Um, or excuse me, for street infrastructure projects in the future. Um, all of this discussion tonight has not done anything to actually address those needs. Um, to the point, going back quite a ways now. About if we do sidewalk improvements for, um, this LID that's being proposed. Does the community have the option to put the sidewalks in themselves, or are they abound to a city contractor at a higher rate likely? To installing local improvement district sidewalks, and I think that's a fair consideration and question to be given here because there is quite a difference in cost.
Sure, Chris. Do, do, do landowners have the option to install their own sidewalks?
Uh, typically on local improvement district. I mean, the, there's two separate things, you've got the district, which is how you're gonna pay for it. Then we're gonna have a bid that's gonna go out. And that request for bids is gonna need to specify what the job is that's being done. So if we're gonna not include specific sections of sidewalk, we. Would need to know that sooner than later, I guess. Um. I'm not necessarily opposed to. Option to yourself or not, but I, I don't know how we would make that alleviate. The responsibility for the local improvement district, so. I don't know, that may be more of a legal question for Mr. Brewer as far as. You know, does, does constructing your own sidewalk remove you from the LID, and if so, then how do you reassess? Everybody else for the total cost of that project, right, so.
Well, yeah, so it wouldn't necessarily remove you from the. LID, I think that what it does is raise a question, i- i- is. Just to circle you all the way back around, it's, okay, what's the project? The LID is paying for, is it the sidewalks, or is it? The street? And are you, are, are you back to the scope of this project would be? It's a street project the city is gonna do. And it, and the council then, uh, directs the. Property owners to do their sidewalks. Uh. Under the ordinance that already exists for that, with that three-year period. I, I, I think that's really where you are again, a, as we talk around that.
Chris?
Part of the difficulty, I note Counselor Andrade's got her hand up, so I appreciate, let me jump in here. Part of the difficulty on the sidewalks, when you have these gaps. A lot of times it's the engineering, which is why Counsel Andrade correctly talked about when we look at. These gaps and, and requiring sidewalks to be installed, typically it's because the engineering's already been done, the grades already been set. You know where you're starting, you know where you're ending, you know your elevations, all that's been said already. Um, to come in on a street that's not fully improved, where none of that engineering work has been done. That's when it's difficult to have an individual property owner be required to install a section of sidewalk. Because essentially what you're saying is you need to engineer, engineer the entire street. Make sure that the grades are correct, so you know exactly where that sidewalk's gonna go, so you can install your section of sidewalk. Um, which again is why in the past the council's been reluctant to require property owners on unimproved streets, where no engineering's been done yet. To install sidewalks, right, because you just don't know exactly where it really should go. On the case of North Eleventh Street, the engineering has been completed, because this was a, a city, you know, this is a city project, the city engineers. Got it engineered, we know slopes, we know all those things. Now, we can pass that information on to private contractors outside of. A reimbursement district or outside of the city's contractor. Um, but you are, you know, it is a little bit different still than having the street fully improved, so my recommendation would be. If we want to go down that road, then the city just look at doing the street improvement. Paying for the street improvement and giving the property owners three years to install their own sidewalks. Um, that seems like, you know, maybe a, a less expensive alternative for everybody. On the other hand, now you're asking each individual property owner to get a separate contractor. Separate bid, separate material purchase, et cetera, and so now you don't have those economies of scales. That you do gain with a city project, and so which one is cheaper? I don't know, the only way to know is to get on the other side of the project and, and you know, the, the intent has always been. To try to get some economies of scale. This project, other projects, and try to do it all with a contractor at one time, so everything's installed. I think the only way you do that is to do it through the LID and through the city's contract. Um, with a contractor coming to do all of the project at one time. It's expedient, I don't know that you're really gonna pay that much more. Um, for the project, but again, I, I, I don't know, I just, I would not have any evidence to, some evidence to suggest that you're gonna pay. Substantial less if you did it yourself or had your own contractor come and do it for you.
Thank you. And so, um, I'm gonna allow Counsel Andrade to answer her question, and then I'm gonna have a vote on whether or not we're gonna extend the meeting. Or whether we're going to adjourn. Um, Counsel Andrade, go ahead.
Um, I, I also want to note that Counsel Bisco has her hand up in case you can't tell, um, so.
Yeah, I raised my hand, make that statement before, but go ahead, we're gonna vote on it, so it's fine.
Um. I don't think it's fine, I think she should still be able to speak prior to that. Um, but anyway, I don't remember what the. TGM program grants and such are like, because I haven't looked at them since like twenty nineteen-ish. But, um, if there's a way to look into. Applying for that to help. You know, offset these costs for these streets that are going to be improved. Because. I, I personally do believe that sidewalk, that these sidewalks, um, estimates are, are really unreasonable. And so if there's a way to get a, some sort of funding to help at least with that. Um. I would appreciate, um, having that information and that is it.
Thank you. And so, just wanna check in on council, I don't mind wait, having Counsel Bisco speak, I just wanna get the approval of the council. Uh, do you wanna, um. I'll make a motion to adjourn, and if we wanna adjourn, that's fine, or we can, um, move forward. Uh, all in favor of adjourning at this time, please raise your hand and say hi. Okay, I'll post. All of, all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Nay. Uh, so, motion fails two to five. Counselor Bisco, it sounds like folks would like to hear what you had to say.
So I am going to ask this question, if we could form the LID to. Well, at this, I'm not even sure that's the right terminology anymore, the street gets improved by the city. We asked this community, I think there are resources in this community to do a less expensive job and just as quality of work on the sidewalks. And we know that sidewalks can be requested of property owners outside of an LID. So can we do the street first? Can we initiate the request of sidewalks to be done by these property owners? And can we also apply for safe routes to school grants, which would also offset some of these costs?
And Chris, with that, all, after we get the engineer's report, is that kind of the, this time when we can make those decisions?
Yeah, we can, so, you know, we're continually looking for grants, the TGM grant that was mentioned is more of a planning grant. The TGM, Total Growth Management. Um. Really looks at transportation, growth management, how it relates to transportation and planning for future development, so. They don't typically have construction type grants or sidewalk grants. Um, Safe Routes to Schools does, uh, those are competitive, um. I've kind of got penciled out to apply for one of those this, this year for South Sixteenth Street, which is the next project on the CIP. Uh, which includes, uh, substantial sidewalks on both replacement sidewalk, on Sixteenth Street, on the school side. And on the opposite side where there is no sidewalk at all. And in, as, in addition to extending that sidewalk along the street all the way over to Seventeenth Street, so. That was gonna be a fairly big request for sidewalk request there. Um, I'm not opposed for asking for additional funds for this project, that's what the council wants to do, but. Um, you, you know, there, there are grant programs out there, we do apply for them often. And as able, um, but I was not intending to apply for additional grants for this project outside of the Campbell Grant that we already received.
Good, thank you. Council Lehman?
Yeah, I think the state should pay for it, frankly, um, it's their rules that are forcing the infill on us and causing this. Street to be used by people that shouldn't normally use it to avoid the traffic on the, on the highway, the state highway. That the state refuses to increase capacity on regardless of how their. Land use policies impact congestion and whatnot, and I won't spend a lot more time talking about that, because I have. A lot, but anyway, I think the state. a lot. But anyway, I think the state should pay for it because they're the reason that we have to improve this street. And they're gonna continue to be the reason why we have to improve the other streets. And they're using our money to do all of this, so they should funnel it back to us. Or they should get us more buses, one of the two. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Kazi?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, made by sec- by Counsel Kazi and seconded by Counsel Lo. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for having such a great discussion this evening. It is very, uh, fruitful, and we look forward to chatting with you here in a few weeks. Thank you.